See, she used to know more of what's going on. She used to sit here too. Both of us did.
Kind of like the world travel.
Test.
Thank you for the rapid recovery.
Test, test. Test.
I haven't turned in the insurance yet. I figured, yeah, I figured they, I give them weeks, so. I went around, quickly hit all the hawk shops today and they haven't showed up there yet.
Test.
They are in the back room. You know, the next time, Jim, I don't, the next time I might not be smart enough to not leave the keys in the car, but I might be smart enough enough to tell you that I did. You're just reporting? Yeah, I lost TV off. But then, uh, no. The, uh, but the, uh, you know, the keys in the car are all my fault. But, if I want to use this TV on my deck, I can deal with it.
I'll call the meeting to order. The records show that all of the members of the council are present except Mrs. Shea and Ms. Rosen. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the last meeting? This is Gengerelli.
Just in the conservation committee minutes, Peter Nielsen's name from the health department should be spelled N-I-E-L-S-E-N. It was spelled Nelson. It's Nielsen.
Thank you. Any other changes? If not, we'll accept the minutes with that correction. Your items for final consideration this evening, the first item is from the administration ordinance. The first item is from the administration ordinances and resolutions committee. Mr. Reedy.
The committee recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance amending sections 5.56.020, 5.56030, 5.56040, 5.56050, 5.56060, and 5.56070, Missoula municipal code, and I so move.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Gengerelli.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hermes.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Loughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
Wood. Ordinance passes ten zero.
The next item is from the public works committee. Mr. Potts.
Yes, this is the, uh, final consideration of the closure of Woody Street between Spruce and Pine for the purpose of a mountain line bus transfer site. Committee recommended that the council admit either request, close Woody Street between Spruce and Pine, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Reedy?
Yes, uh, I spoke against this in committee and made the motion. I just don't think it's a good place to put it next to a hundred-year-old church that's always been good neighbors. I didn't think so then, and I don't think so tonight.
Mr. Sampson.
I too will support the motion as it came out of committee, but I think we do definitely have a problem with the bus where it's at. I think there's a safety problem where the bus is at. I think there is a problem with U.S. West. I see where we have referred to the public safety committee, the item of the bus, and I would hope that the public safety committee will see their way to work with the various organizations' interest in this and see if we can't come up with a better and good spot for the bus transfer site. I personally don't think this is it, but I think maybe we may be able to find something more appropriate than they were. I don't, I don't think it's a dead issue. I think we must try to find a better spot for the bus, but I don't believe that between City Hall and the church is the place for it.
Mr. Horton.
I have a comment and a question, and I'll make a specific effort to speak up because apparently I'm not getting across. I didn't correct the minutes on some minor things. My fault for not being heard.
I think with a lot of us, Curtis, that it's important to get as close to the microphone as you possibly can. I've found that if I'm more than two inches away from it, that they can never hear me.
Okay. The comment is this, that the buses are having a problem finding a home, and apparently nobody wants them as diesel units. The council is apparently opposed to making a temporary change that would have such heavy impact on the neighbors of the temporary location. We are going to have to find a permanent home for these things, and that's going to be awful hard to do, considering that whoever is neighbors to these things will have a dozen diesel units idling next to them for hours at a time. And it may be that we have to consider some type of alternative fuel. The question is this, the way this is worded, I want to make sure I understand this, a yes vote is a vote to deny the request for closure?
That's correct.
Thank you.
This is Craig.
I'd, I'd like to say I agree with Al's comments, but also I think that we have to quickly find another place for the bus, because it is harming the U.S. West equipment, and this isn't something we can fool around doing. So, if we all get a mindset to hurry up and find a place, everyone will be better off.
Any further discussion? Mr. Wood.
I, hopefully, the, we could develop some criteria by which we can evaluate these, hopefully, future locations, because at this point, it seems like if we're gonna, nobody's gonna want the bus, so we're gonna have to say, well, these are the reasons that we think are legitimate for not putting a bus in one place. So, until we do that, I'm gonna pass on this, because given where we're at, I don't know, maybe this is the best location.
Further discussion? I would like to point out, I think most of the members of the council know this, but I think it is important to reiterate that a number of people in the community, including several members of city government, have spent hours and hours totaling probably weeks by now, dealing with this issue. And I certainly welcome the council's involvement in it, and I genuinely do. I believe that it is one that requires the council's involvement. But the comments that have been made here about the fact that there is no easy solution have to be underscored, and anyone from the council who wants to get involved, I think I can assure you that you're going to find that that's the case. I guess that I would also ask that if any members of the congregation are willing to get involved in helping to find a solution, that I think that that would be welcome as well, because, well, of course, it's important that the people there have taken the lead in protecting their own institution. There is a broader obligation that's involved here, and we would welcome involvement in helping us to find the best solution, and including, once we've found the solution, trying to persuade more people in Missoula to use the bus, because I'm more and more convinced that that's part of what we're going to have to do to address our air pollution problems here. So I think that I see what direction we're headed here, and I suspect that whatever other choice we come up with, that we will also have unhappy neighbors, and sooner or later, we're going to have to bite the bullet and make a decision. If there's no further discussion, ask the clerk to call the roll.
On the motion to deny the request to close Woody Street, Gengerelli.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hermes.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Loughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
Wood.
Passed.
Craig.
Yes.
With the pass care to change his votes. No change? Motion passes nine zero one.
We'll go now to public comments from citizens. We've given opportunity every week for citizens to address the council on any items other than those that have been set for public hearing. We welcome your comments. We ask that you limit them to three minutes apiece, and that you, before you begin to speak, give your name and address, or as you begin to speak. Mr. Kreisberg.
My name is Michael Kreisberg. I live at 244 South Second West. I have two comments on an item that's going to be coming up, item eight, the public hearing that will be set for next Monday. My first comment probably won't please everybody. I hope my second one will. As you know, people both in and out of the neighborhood have great concerns about the Chestnut Street development, and we have sought to meet with the owners and resolve this in an amicable fashion. I am concerned that although a great deal of time has been spent on this, and everybody is frustrated, we have very different interpretations as to how fair a hearing has been given to the proposal on its merits. And it seems to me that to set a hearing tonight, which I expect you to do, for next Monday, on a proposal that you haven't yet seen, that in fact will not be aired in any detail until tomorrow, is premature. I understand that legal staff is of the opinion that there is no way to put this before design review, but you are under statutory obligation to consider all of the relevant items in the comprehensive plan when you trade property or give property away. This is not a regulatory, but a statutory requirement. It seems to me impossible that all of you will be able to understand this proposal in its complexity. That is, a specific piece of property with a riverfront plan, and the historic neighborhood plan, and the park environments ordinance, which are valid because they're part of the master plan. They all come into play, they converge on this property, and they make it one of the most complicated little and controversial land developments that council has considered in a long time. It seems to me it would really be important to ask the OCD staff, your planning staff, to develop a full and comprehensive report on it, make it available to you in a speedy fashion, so that you really would be able to reflect on this and give it the due consideration it deserves. So I would urge postponement of that. I don't expect you to agree with me. My second comment, I hope you will find more to your taste. We have tried, as I said, to sit down with the owners and work out an arrangement. I'm happy to report that as of today, they have finally agreed to do so, and Wednesday at noon, we are going to sit down with them. They have an attorney, the neighborhood group, and people outside the neighborhood have also retained an attorney, and we are going to sit down with respective attorneys and a few people who will help facilitate. And I want to tell you what it is we're proposing to do, because I was a bit dismayed last Monday when Dan, I think with best of intentions, asked you how you felt about buying this property with public money, and I think you poor ordainedly said there was no way to do it. We've never asked for a handout. We have raised $20,000 so far, and our proposal is briefly this, we give the $20,000 down as an option to buy. We do not know what the final figure is at this point. We are going to ask the city to come in as the guarantor of this. The city can apply for all kinds of funding which we cannot get, nature conservancy, for example, water and land conservation funds, federal park monies. We're going to ask that we can, whether we can sit down with a public and private group and craft a deal, that we will raise more money in the neighborhood, possibly MRA could contribute some funds, there's a possibility of matching funds if the city money is contributed in some form, there are development rights which can be given away, there are tax benefits, there are all kinds of ways to do this, so that we don't end up with a rancorous and bitter situation. And I just wanted you to know that we're going to be sitting down trying to do that, and we would much rather spend our $20,000 on buying land and contributing to the open space system than wasting it on tiresome litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any other public comment? It's Plumley.
Hi, I'm Mary Plumley, representing the Missoula Urban Transportation District Board of Directors. And just for clarification, I certainly do not intend to address the previous public hearing or your decision tonight, but I come to you with information about something else. The timing just happens to hit for tonight. Today begins the first day of a national event called Try Transit Week. This week is not only sponsored by transit entities across the country, but one of its distinguished sponsors is the League of Cities, a lot of other national sponsors. I come to you tonight to invite you, as our city officials, to join Missoula and to help Mountain Line introduce the citizens to transit. Transit has proven itself nationally to be environmentally sound alternative to driving a vehicle alone. I know from previous discussions and even tonight, hearing comments about diesel buses and about alternative fuels. I should tell you that Try Transit Week provided to us some information that we not only provided you, but to the media, information about diesel, information about alternative fuels, where we may go in the future. Diesel is not a perfect fuel. I wouldn't ever believe, you know, stand here and tell you that. However, I have to believe that the information provided me from local, state, and federal sources, that diesel in fact emits less carbon monoxide per vehicle than the automobile, and less nitrous oxides. I have to put some faith in that. Carbon monoxide is one of our problems here in Missoula. The other information that I think will please you, and we're real excited about at Mountain Line, is that we're currently working with an environmental concern locally, and we've drafted a grant application to the state to do an analysis of alternative fuels here in Missoula. You know, we know a lot about demonstration projects, and about trials of alternative fuels in other locations, but we have a unique air inversion problem. We have a unique climate, and we're one of the few properties of our size in a non-attainment area, so we want to investigate alternative fuels and what they would mean to Missoula. How would they improve our air? How they compare? There's various alternative fuels being tested. And also, are they economically feasible for us? We hope to hear by fall whether this grant is accepted, and I will certainly update you and let you know what progress will be made. Thanks.
Mr. Horton.
I want to congratulate you on your exploration of the alternative fuels, and I also have a question related to what appears to be a skewed study when they're comparing emissions per passenger mile. As I understand it, they generally compare these with one person per unit in automobiles, and at least a 50% load in the buses. Is that correct?
I believe some studies do that, yes, sir. Some others that I have seen compares it with a much smaller number.
Okay.
Significantly smaller.
Because we have significantly smaller number of riders, and that would invert this comparison. But I mean, again, congratulations for exploring the alternative fuels, because I think that's part of the reason we're having trouble finding neighbors for the buses.
Unfortunately, some of the alternative fuels tests that's taking place in the nation aren't testing to meet the EPA regulations either, so there's still, I personally believe our manufacturers are behind. I think alternative fuels should have been much further a decade ago, and I certainly support the transit industry's efforts to improve and, you know, to get us on the forefront of alternative fuel vehicles.
This is Gengerelli.
Mary, what was the environmental firm that you're working with, and what exactly will they be working with you on?
At this, at this point, there's been an application drafted on behalf of the district. The application currently is under review by myself to be presented to the board. If approved by my board to be submitted, it would go to the Department of Natural Resources here in the state, which, it has to be an environmentally approached grant. The grant is by, it was prepared for us by Shannon Environmental Groups here on Main Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mary? Thank you. Other citizen comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Pastor Bob Starbuck from the First Baptist Church, and what I wanted to say is a word of thanks to all of you for hearing us. We know it's a difficult problem, but I wanted to say thanks for your attention, thanks for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. Any other public comment? Any other, anyone else wish to address the council? If not, then we'll go on to communications from the mayor. I have a couple of proclamations this evening. First is for Bruce Whitehead Day. Whereas Dr. Bruce Whitehead has served as principal of Hellgate Elementary District Number Four for the past 12 years, and whereas Bruce Whitehead has received the Montana Distinguished Principals Award presented by the Montana Association of Elementary School Principals, and whereas Bruce Whitehead will be Montana's representative to the National Distinguished Principals Award. Now therefore, I Daniel Chemus, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 1992, to be Bruce Whitehead Day in the City of Missoula. Congratulations to Bruce. Second is for National Preservation Week. Whereas historic preservation gives Americans an authentic experience of their diverse heritage and provides direction for future generations, and whereas historic preservation enhances the livability of cities, towns, and rural areas across America, and whereas preservation brings history to life is the theme for Preservation Week 1992, co-sponsored by Missoula Historic Preservation Advisory Committee in Missoula and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I Daniel Chemus, Mayor of the City of Missoula, do hereby proclaim May 10th through the 16th, 1992, as National Preservation Week, and call upon the people of Missoula to recognize and participate in this special observance. I'd also like to welcome to our cable cast this evening, the third graders at Cold Springs School. Mary Udi is their teacher. They're not here, but they're at home watching. This is part of their assignment for their study of government, and we'd just like to say welcome and come down and see us sometime. I had, and I was, I had a call today from someone who wanted to have an interview, and some of you may also be called, someone who's traveling around America, writing a book on the cities that he has discovered are most talked about in the country as places that people are interested in living, and Missoula is one of the places that he wanted to talk about and interview some people about. That seems to me to be good news and bad news. At the very least underscores for me the importance of the Vision 2020 process, which is underway, and which this council has supported by helping us to hire Phil Smith. That conference will be held on the 13th of June. It's an opportunity for Missoula to decide what it needs to do in order to preserve those characteristics, which more and more people seem to be finding attractive, and so I want to take one more opportunity to encourage people to be ready to get involved in that. We'll go on now to the consent agenda.
There are 13 items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is to reappoint Ruth Bennett to the cemetery board with the term from May 1st, 1992, to April 30th, 1994. Second is to reappoint Tom Boone to the parking commission board with the term of May 1st, 1992, to April 30th, 1996. Third, to reappoint Ken Stolz to the Parks and Recreation Board with the term from May 1st, 1992, to April 30th, 1994. Fourth, to reappoint Carol Fisher to the Parks and Recreation Board with the term from May 1st, 1992, to April 30th, 1994. Fifth, to reappoint Bob O'Connor to the Parks and Recreation Board with the term from May 1st, 1992, to April 30th, 1994. Sixth, to reappoint Raymond Murray to the police commission with the term from May 1st, 1992, to April 30th, 1995. Seventh, to agree to replace the totaled police car from contingency fund after bids are received and approved. Eighth, to approve the confirmation of Officer Sandra Borkland. Ninth, to grant Bob Zimmarino's appeal for second time use of the MRA code compliance program in the amount of $15,000. Tenth, to award the contract for Project 92-040, Voice Lumber Sidewalk Project, to Zachariason Concrete for $7,640.10. Concrete for $7,640.10. Eleventh, approve alley encroachment permit for building at 100 East Broadway Western Federal Savings Bank to Public Works. Twelve, accept Northwest Broadway sanitary sewer easements to Public Works. Thirteen, accept sanitary sewer easements for Block 2 Spring Hills Number 4, SID Number 497/498, the Wapakia Bellevue Sanitary Sewer System.
Under the consent agenda, before we proceed to vote on it, I'd like to introduce Officer Borkland and ask that she stand and be recognized. Thank you for your service so far, and good luck in this vote. Is there any item that anybody would like to have returned to the regular agenda? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
On all 13 items, Harrison.
Yes.
Hermes.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedie.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
Wood.
Craig.
Yes.
Jingorelli.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 10-0.
We'll go on now to committee reports. Appointments Committee. This is Craig.
The committee recommends the council appoint Roman Kuczer, that's K-U-C-Z-E-R, to the Design Review Board to fill Patricia Hickson's position until August 31st, 1994, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
That's the end of Mary's report.
Finance and License Committee. Mr. Sampson.
Hal could use your microphone. Thanks.
I believe there's one item only, if they're not, and that is claims. Committee recommends the council approve claims totaling $47,395.24, and I would so move.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
End of report.
Public Works Committee. Mr. Potts.
On the regular agenda, the change order. Change order number two, number three, SID 497-498, Wapakia Bellevue Sanitary Sewer System. Committee recommended the council pass a resolution in accordance with Section 7-5-4308, MCA Procedure to Modify Municipal Contract. Approved change order number three to the contract between Casper and Majera Incorporated in the City of Missoula for the SID 497-498, Wapakia Bellevue Sanitary Sewer System for the amount of $611. I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Hermes.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Potts.
Yes.
Reedie.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Jingorelli.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Resolution passes 10-0.
The next is item number seven. I spread property necessary to provide access to South Shore Park. Committee recommended the council set a public hearing for May 18th, 1992, in order to consider the proposed development of the property at Block 48 of the Knowles Edition adjacent to South First Street and Chestnut Street. The committee recommended that the developer bring the various personnel to the May 12th, 1992 Public Works Committee meeting, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wood.
I need two questions.
I think that the second is just a part of the first. Mr. Wood, you want them divided?
Will, could you turn it on?
If somebody else brings in a proposal, are we going to be able to look at that too, or?
Mr. Sampson.
I would think that it's a public meeting. The developers have the proposal, but it's also to set public hearings, so the public hearing way gets open to the public.
I guess I was talking about the committee meeting.
Any further response?
If you recall, your motion to vacate, your motion to vacate is making the project approval contingent.
I know.
And that's the developer's project, not someone else's project.
I know.
But the public comment would allow people to come in and criticize or offer alternatives.
But in some ways, don't you think looking at a different proposal, you may be able to see some of the points people are making? Obviously, we don't.
Well, the point is that the developers will be the ones coming in seeking approval, and it'll be a matter of convincing them of another alternative. If they're proposing X and you want X modified by Y, then the X-Y combination could evolve out of this. But if you're talking about a separate party somewhere else coming in and coming in with a proposal for someone else's land, the city council wouldn't have that before him as a vote, because that's not part of what you based your vacation on. You have to have the developer's proposal before you.
My understanding is that the meeting at noon on Wednesday is meant as a place to consider other proposals as well. Mr. Horton.
I've been working with both sides on this thing, and one of the reasons they want to go ahead and get the approval is so they can set a value on the land. And right now, there is some stuff in the works about possibly setting a price on the land and working with the neighborhood. They're not... Well, I understand from Mike Craig that they gave her a figure. They were really reluctant to come up with a figure until they found out what they could do with the land, because that would determine the value of it. But there are things in the works right now that at the public hearing, we may have requests from the developers and the community to do something other than we're currently considering.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll go on now to comments of city council members. Starbuck, Mr. Harrison.
Today I attended the funeral of Clifford Olsson. Clifford and his wife Doris helped me quite a bit when I decided to get involved with public life.
The hard life.
I always liked him, and I always liked Clifford. Missoula feel the loss of this man, who was one of our finest citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Harvis.
I too wanted to say a word to Clifford. He helped me get involved in... With politics, and he was always had a kind word to say, and seemed to really got his way to help others. I would like to thank the mayor and the Missoula Legion and the Maverick and Red baseball team for letting me kick off their '92 season yesterday. The teams started the season appropriately with a home opener against Butte, a somewhat blustery day here in Missoula. And I must say, the Lindbergh-Craig field was in excellent condition. The facility is a beautiful facility, and it's really come a long way, and they should be very proud of what they've done out there, putting that together. It was gorgeous, gorgeous field and gorgeous facility for a game. The Reds opened with a big win while the Mavs dropped their first test, and I'm sure that they'll do all Missoula proud this season, competing and learning as athletes and future citizens and citizens. I did want to give a report tonight. I was away Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday on a meeting for the city, and I've given everyone a letter they can read along, and thought it might be good to let anyone else know about the meeting. The conference I attended this past Friday was on behalf of the city, was excellent, both in the scope of information delivered and as a way to compare how other cities nationwide are using their cable franchise agreements. The conference was sponsored by the National League of Cities and was titled "The Local Officials' Guide to Cable Franchise Renewal." This conference was sold out with over 130 city officials attending. The meeting was administered by the top experts in the nation concerning cable franchise agreements, those being attorneys from Nicholas Miller, those being attorneys Nicholas Miller and Joe Van Eaton from the Washington DC law firm of Miller and Holbrook. Also Barry Orton, professor of telecommunications from the University of Wisconsin, was there. The reason that so many cities attended is because most of the 15-year franchise agreements are coming up for renewal following their first agreements in 19... With the 1984 Cable Act. It was estimated that 80 percent of the cable households in the US will be affected in these next negotiations. I learned a lot of new points about how cities are using their franchise monies. For example, nearly all the cities put the franchise monies into the general fund and use it for public projects, including street repair, public works, and tax relief. Cities need to plan renewal, it was suggested, 36 months in advance. The trend is putting public access facilities into what they call friendly public institutions like libraries or community theaters, thereby having good public availability and little or no rental costs. Most cities are now shying away from what they called sponsored programs that aren't truly locally produced and are merely tagged as requested by local residents. These included some programs they called Race and Reason, American Atheist News Forum and Religious Programming. Cities are now moving in a new way using their public access channels for city-operated government access programming, controlled and operated within the city itself. That way, the public can still use the equipment, and the city uses it daily for public information. I did show Nicholas Miller the agreement we're currently working on with Satcom and got his positive feedback on that. Mr. Miller emphasized the need for city councils to decide the extent they really want to be in the television business. Most have decided, due to the high cost of technology and operation, to fund basic program and use the franchise monies to help the general fund and avoid increasing tax burdens. Cable operators nationwide are going all out to change and improve their image within their own communities. It was explained that a 10,000 subscriber system is about an $18 million asset, so naturally, operators are protecting their asset. Many good training aids were provided. We now have a flow chart and a notebook provided on refinancing, franchising, a public survey that we can use that some cities had sent out, along with common sense explanation and breakdown of the 1984 Cable Act. Cable system designs are included, including the difference between fiber optic and coaxial cable, comparison of telephone delivery and cable delivery into homes, information about video compression, high-definition television, and future pay-per-view movie options on cable. So while the conference is very detailed and lengthy, I'm glad I attended and believe the money we spent was most useful. It was pointed out that cities, even in Montana, compete for industry and jobs, and our future use of telecommunications at City Hall will be most important. Also, I realize now that Les Page, our advisor who was helping the city with our franchise agreements even before I was on council, has been doing an excellent job with his advice and direction. His reputation was very well-respected, and now I see why. I'll put the material in the council office for your review. The notebook is filled with information about the meeting and cable franchising. Also, there's literature that we can subscribe to if we choose to. There was... Jim Nugent gave me this evening the review that Les Page conducted on TCI with their rebuild and how that fits into the compliance for the city. And I believe Jim said there were five copies left over, so any council person who'd like to look at that can do that.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Horton.
I'd like to say condolences to Doris Olsson, and she is in good hands right now. Plenty of people looking after her, and I have no reason to believe that will change, because if you wind up your life having the respect of the people that you respected, you can't do too much better than that. And Clifford apparently had a lot of people that he respected and got that respect in return. A different unrelated item. It's curious that this week, there's an ad in the paper announcing Montana Nursing Home Week, May 10th through the 16th. This year's theme: Celebration of Quality. It's particularly curious in light of the fact that the Coalition for Nursing Home Reform couldn't get bureaucrats from Helena to participate in their forum last week. Another unrelated item. The third graders watching at home tonight for Mississauga's class. I doubt that they read the paper much, but there was something in there about Sean Connery, the fellow that plays 007, James Bond in the movies. And he claims that it was the books that he read that changed his life and gave him the opportunities. And the point I want to make is this, that there are many good books and tape sets, more recently, written by people who have done just about anything you would ever want to do. And if you want to find out how to do what they did, read their books. You can get from where you are to where you want to be if you can find somebody else that's done it and track their steps.
Thank you, Curtis. Mr. Reedie.
No comment.
Mr. Sampson.
Yes, a couple items. As some of you know, I had the misfortune of having my car stolen over the weekend. But my thanks to the police and also to the thieves. The car was recovered yesterday morning... No, early this morning, excuse me. I hope the golf clubs, though they stole out of the trunk, treats them much worse than they did me, and they didn't treat me real well. But at least I got the car back. The garage door opener that they got is no longer programmed for my garage door opener, so that's of no value either. But thanks for not dinging up the car for me. The other item is I would like to drop off of both Conservation and Appointments Committee and would place myself on Cable TV Committee. And also, this is Juanita Isman's weekend, so let's wish her well.
Hal, what was the other one besides Conservation?
Appointments.
Mr. Potts.
I got a call this afternoon late from Paul Roman Shay, and she asked me to tell the council that she wouldn't be here for the meeting tonight, and also that in the minutes of the Public Works Committee, they left her out as being there, and she was there. She wanted that straightened up.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Laughlin.
Is it on? Thank you for the mystery. I would like to thank the city for the opportunity to represent them at the training session or the seminar we had in Bozeman for the last three days last week. I learned a lot. I learned two things. In particular, that the upcoming budget is really not Frankenstein, and I also learned that the Bobcats really are in awe of the Grizzlies. And I do want to thank you again for allowing me to attend that conference.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Wood.
Dan, do you know what's up with the wellhead protection ordinance? Are we going to deal with that this spring, or did that get... Or what happened from that?
We've tried to time our approach to the wellhead protection ordinance in an appropriate way with our dealing with the Water Quality District.
So we're going to risk it then and wait?
Yeah, I think that basically it's on hold while we move on the Water Quality District, and that's with the concurrence of mountain water. Mrs. Jingorelli.
University area homeowners' annual meeting was held last Thursday night, and there were several interesting things on the agenda. The first one was regarding... The first one was regarding the city zoning ordinance. Several concerns were aired once again about residential neighborhoods and the need to protect the concept of primarily single-family zones. And Dan Chemis, Gary Evans, and myself all stressed to the group that while state law mandates certain uses such as group homes to be included in residential zones, the city has no intention of changing the integrity of residential neighborhoods. In discussing this issue with both Dan Chemis and Doug Harrison, we all agreed that council members should communicate their feelings to Gary Evans so that he can incorporate them into his second draft. And that should be due to come out pretty soon, so if, if any council members have any thoughts about neighborhoods, integrity of neighborhoods, or if you feel that other uses should be included, please communicate those things to Gary. Secondly, there's a public hearing on Mountain Line proposed route changes. That'll be tomorrow night at seven o'clock in room two oh one at the county courthouse. And anyone wishing to communicate with the Urban Transportation Board should attend tomorrow's meeting. Among the proposed changes are those involving routes on both North and Maurice Avenue. So if you live in that area and you'd like to communicate your feelings, please go to the meeting tomorrow.
Thanks. This is Rick.
Dan.
Mr. Reedy.
I just, seeing Al had the story, it's kind of funny. I was sitting in Al's car a couple days ago, and he said, "You know, Jack, this is one of the only cities that I know about where you can leave your keys in your car, and nobody, nobody will dare, nobody will bother it." So I called him up Sunday morning, and I said, "How are things going?" He said, "That's a good, somebody stole my car." It's a lesson.
Staff comment.
I just would like to, I'm Dennis Taylor, Chief Administrative Officer, and I would like to invite interested people and council members to the next meeting of the Vision Twenty Twenty Steering Committee meeting. As I told you last week, the committee has decided to meet at the ungodly hour of seven a.m. in order to allow working people and students and others who have been participating in this process of preparing for the conference on June thirteenth and beyond. To my amazement, twenty-five people were there bright and early last week, and this next meeting will be Thursday, May fourteenth, seven a.m. in the Missoula High School Administration Building at nine fifteen South Avenue West. I'm told coffee and donuts will be furnished for those of you who can make it at that early hour. I would also like to invite the public and members of the council to the open house for Juanita's retirement, which is Friday from two p.m. to four p.m. here at City Hall. Jim Nugent points out to me that we have a city ordinance that prohibits leaving your car keys in your car, so for those of you who are viewing tonight, just a word to the wise. And finally, I guess I'd like to echo Councilman Horton's advice on reading a book, and to the students who are watching, there's no better place to find a good book than the Missoula Public Library.
Mr. Horton.
Dennis, I had written in on my calendar that there was a preliminary twenty twenty meeting tomorrow at three thirty at the courthouse. Is that not correct? That's the information I've been given out.
That may be a meeting specifically with the county commissioners, but the steering committee, which like I said is about twenty-five people and growing that are working on the specifics of the meeting on June thirteenth, their next meeting is seven a.m. on Thursday. There are a number of subcommittees that are meeting that we report back to the full committee on Thursday, so that could be one of the planning subcommittees, publicity, or arrangements, or food, or some of the other committees that have already been formed.
And the place, again please?
Missoula High School Administration Building, nine fifteen South Avenue West. That's right next to Sentinel High School.
Thank you.
Mr. Nugent.
As Councilman Hermes mentioned, and there should be a cover memo probably in your box, five bound copies of Les Page's report about TCI arrived today in the mail. This should be referred to committee the next time Cable Television Committee meets. I'd like to know how many council members would like a copy. We could make additional copies there, approximately twenty-five pages in length. Or if you would like, there's one in the mayor's office, one in the clerk's office, and one in my office, and I thought the co-chairs of the committee could have the other two copies. You could borrow from them, or we could make copies. Does anyone have a desire right now, tonight, to get a copy later in the week?
I'd like that one, maybe.
Anyone else?
Al? Any other staff comment? Is there any new business to come before the council? I'll go to items to be referred.
The first one is one that's too late for the agenda. It's to the Appointments Committee. It's a request by Mayor Chemis regarding appointment of Perry Gleisman to the MRA Board to Appointments. Request by Mike Craig regarding designate Missoula Cultural Exchange as the official cultural agency for the City of Missoula to Administration Ordinances and Resolutions. Request by Mike Craig regarding extension of boundaries for Farmer's Market to Administration Ordinances and Resolutions. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding decision on whether to be a party intervenor in mountain water company's rate case to Administration Ordinances and Resolutions Committee. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding claims to finance and license. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding journal voucher resolution to finance and license. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding final resolution to issue SID number five hundred bonds to finance and license. Petition number seven zero one four, request by Grant Creek Village Incorporated to annex attractive land being all that portion of the northeast one quarter, southwest one quarter of section five, township thirteen north, range nineteen west, principal meridian Montana, lying northerly of the northerly right-of-way limit of Interstate ninety and easterly of the easterly right-of-way limit of Grant Creek Road. Petition number seven zero one five, request by Roland and Kathy Johnson to annex Track B Certificate of Survey number nineteen forty-seven, forty-one Wild Ground Lane to platannexation and zoning. Petition number seven zero one six, request by Thomas Poindexter to annex Lot Thirty-nine, Ravenwood Hills, fifty-seven twenty-five Garrett Avenue to platannexation and zoning. Request by John Mangiamelli regarding deadline extension for Mansion Heights subdivision phase one to platannexation and zoning. Request by John Mangiamelli regarding deadline extension for Bojeast addition to platannexation and zoning. Request by Jack Reedy regarding appropriate rezoning or interim zoning of tracks B and F of Hillview Heights PUD consistent with South Hills Comprehensive Plan to platannexation and zoning. Request by Kelly Rosenleaf regarding moving of bus station to public safety. Request by Elaine Shea regarding residential parking permit program to public safety. Request by Doug Harvey regarding curb and sidewalk order for Project ninety-two dash zero three two, thirty-ninth Street from Russell Street to Southwest Higgins to Public Works. Request by Doug Harvey regarding curb and sidewalk order for Project ninety-two dash zero three three, three hundred block of Railroad Street to Public Works. Request by Doug Harvey regarding curb and sidewalk order for Project ninety-two dash zero one two, California Street, Cedar to Broadway to Public Works. Request by Doug Harvey regarding curb and sidewalk order for Project ninety-two dash zero three eight, fifty-four hundred block of Prospect Drive to Public Works. Request by Jolene Mulcahy regarding step sewer easements for three twenty-one North Russell Street West, that's Reds Towing, to Public Works. Request by Joe Allegary regarding appeal of height limitation of fence at eighteen oh one Arthur to Public Works.
Are there any other referrals?
Jim or Bob, did you want to refer that upgrade report?
Yeah, we'd like to refer that. I think...
Can you, can you use your microphone, Bob?
Yeah, let's refer that, and we'll see if we can get Steve Propper to come in this Wednesday when we set the meeting to speak to it.
Now we'll go to announcements of committee meetings.
Administration Ordinances and Resolutions.
Oh, two fifteen Thursday.
Um, two, two thirty Tuesday.
Finance and License.
Three o'clock Thursday.
Platannexation and Zoning.
Four thirty tomorrow, Tuesday.
Public Safety.
Four o'clock on Tuesday, tomorrow.
Public Works.
Thursday at, at three.
Cable TV Committee.
Wednesday at four.
Conservation.
Tuesday at two.
Zoning Subcommittee.
That's held again.
Okay, Administration Ordinances and Resolutions, Thursday at two fifteen p.m. Appointments Tuesday at two thirty. Finance and License Thursday at three. Platannexation and Zoning Tuesday at four thirty. Public Safety Tuesday at four. Public Works Tuesday at three. Cable TV Wednesday at four. Conservation Tuesday at two, and no zoning Subcommittee meeting.
Want to take it further? Now we'll be adjourned.